Okay, I'd like to call the President's City Council meeting to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Counselor Manciano. Counselor Donahue.
Present.
Counselor Stykos. Counselor Nargal. Counselor Arquette.
Present.
Counselor Santa Maria.
Present.
Counselor Favickio.
Present.
Counselor Vice President Palatier.
Present.
Counselor President Lupino.
Present.
At this time, we'd like to ask everyone to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I want to entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting. So moved. Motion by Counsel Vice President Palatier, second by Counsel Santa Maria. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel President Palatier.
Yes. You're gonna have to use a -- you have to give her a mic because I cannot hear up here. So, did you call me for a quote on that?
Counsel President.
There's been a request for a moment of silence for -- acknowledge the passing of Judge John DeBonis' sister who passed away yesterday. So, I'll have him know in a silence that. Thank you. Are there any public acknowledgements or commendations? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on any docketed As usual, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Valerie Shulee, 27 Farms Street, Cranston, Rhode Island. I would like to address 311-7. I really do not see the necessity of sending out what amounts to Recycling 101 with my car tax bill. I find it interesting that it says nothing in this section mandates that the city spend additional funds to distribute this information in the tax bill mailing. That's nice, but as most things with government, it is going to cost the taxpayers. And when I got here, I saw the question of how much was answered, $13,000 to $16,000. I'm not willing to pay it. I'm not willing to spend the money. You have paper costs, printing, and labor. For what? Unless you have been living in a bubble, we already know this information. Of course, knowing and caring are two different things, and Recycling 101 will not help for those who do not care. And you have kids at school, watch TV, surf the net, read a paper. You are already educated on the importance of recycling. Here in Cranston, if you want your garbage collected, guess what? You recycle. I know an experiment was done, and the garbage pickup and recycling didn't necessarily jive in one neighborhood. In my neighborhood, it is done to the letter of the law. This is a problem that can be addressed by the boss, that is you paying the bill, by telling the employee, Waste Management, what you want done and how to do it, not by wasting my money. So don't pay the bill if they're not going to conform and do it correctly. As I read this, does this mean you want to send this out every year and waste my money again and call me a dreamer? But I was hoping you'd be working on how to have less government, thus lowering my taxes, and then need to send out a car tax bill which amounts to tax upon a tax. I don't need Recycling 101. If you need to send something out in my car tax bill, please send information on how to survive in this economy as the government sucks the life out of you. If for some reason you do decide to do this, I respectfully ask that you keep my -- because in the frustration and the haze of tears that comes from trying to figure out what I'm going to go without next in order to pay this tax bill, it's not even going to make it to the recycling bin. It's going directly in the garbage. So thank you for your time.
Anyone else on a docketed item? There being none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. We're on to resolutions. Resolution of the City Council now opposition to Senate Bill 794 and House Bill 5961 mandating binding arbitration for schools. Is there a motion? motion approved. Motion for Vice President Palatier.
Second.
Seconded by Favickio and Santa Maria. Any discussion on this? Counselman Favickio, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, we've been involved in our budget meetings for the last two or three weeks. We've heard from many citizens, department heads, heads of the unions, and many of our constituents. They all told us what we needed to do to straighten out the budget issues and all of the issues that we face in the city. It was a resounding demand not to raise taxes, but we haven't heard any real solutions at this point. Coincidentally, the Journal, Providence Journal, printed a couple of articles a week ago, Sunday and yesterday. Yesterday concerned Cranston's pension system. Some of our vocal constituents have told us repeatedly that the contracts are where we need to address issues and change the structure of these contracts in order to fix the problems that have taken so many years to develop. In fact, it took over 50 years to develop all of these contracts and pension issues, both in the closed-end pension and in the present pension system that we have. There's no quick fix for this year. Now, this legislation, pending in the General Assembly, would require binding arbitration on all unresolved issues for wages, benefits, and other regulations with regard to school contracts, teacher contracts. The impact of this would be, I believe, to deny the mayor, the school committee, the right to negotiate these contracts from, you know, with some power behind them. It would also take away from this council some of the decision-making power on appropriations for those contracts. The taxpayers have a right through their elected officials to control wages, benefits, and pensions, and to allow an arbitrator to make those decisions, I feel, takes away all of our rights. Therefore, I'm asking my colleagues on the council and calling on all of our representatives in the General Assembly to vote against these bills, which will only perpetuate the current system and make it increasingly difficult to control taxes and spending. Whoever wants to support these arguments.
Anyone else to speak on this? There being none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
No.
Counsel Santa Maria.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Palatier.
Yes.
Counsel President Lupino.
Resolution of the City Council proclaiming April 24, 2011, as Rhode Island Remembrance of the Armenian Genocide and Commemoration of the Armenian Genocide from 1915 to 1923 and honoring Armenian-Americans. Motion approved. Motion by Counsel Vice President. Is there a second? By Counsel Arquette, Santa Maria. Any discussion? Counsel Santa Maria.
Counsel President, I'd like to be added as a sponsor if no one objects.
Yeah, per our rules, anyone who wishes to be added would be added as a co-sponsor. Yes, you may. Any discussion? Counselman Arquette.
Yes, thank you, President Lupino. I just wanted to say that I too would like to be a co-sponsor on this legislation. Also, this does represent a dark time in European history, and it's only recently that the nation of Turkey does recognize this holocaust has occurred.
Thank you, Counselman. Counselman Stykos.
It's rare that I get to correct Paul Arquette's history, but they haven't recognized it. They, for the first, last year and this year was the first time that the Turkish government has allowed remembrances or memorials of the Armenian genocide. Well, they haven't officially acknowledged it, and that's a major bone of contention among all Armenians all over the world.
Thank you. Anyone else on this? Clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
Yes.
Counsel Santa Maria.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Palatier.
Yes.
Counsel President Lupino.
Yes. Resolution of the City Council on Recognition of April 20, 2011, as Arbor Day. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved and seconded. And any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
Yes.
Counsel Santa Maria.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Palatier.
Yes.
Counsel President Lupino.
Yes. One resolution that didn't make it to the docket, which we will be acknowledging next meeting, but might be a little bit late, is to recognize the month of May as Mental Health Month. So we will be voting on that next month after it's almost over. We have a month to get healthy.
That should be for the entire year, Counsel President.
I'm sorry, Counsel Santa Maria.
Counsel President, why can't we make a media consideration?
The microphone, please, I cannot hear you at all.
We can make a little media consideration for that resolution.
Media consideration right now. Has no fiscal impact.
Okay. Do you'd like to?
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
Yes.
Counsel Santa Maria.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Palatier.
Yes.
Counsel President Lupino.
Yes. Okay, report of committees. Safety Services and Licenses Committee, Counsel Santa Maria.
Thank you, Counsel President. Ordinance 211-1, Ordinance Amending Title V of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, Business Licenses and Regulations, Creates a Licensing Requirement, Establishes Standards of Practice as well as Rules of Regulation Governing Their Operation and Personnel. This is making the rules more succinct for massage establishments. We don't want to use the word massage parlor, but the committee has met and recommends approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion from Counsel Vice President, and there's a second from Counselman Arquette. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please take the roll?
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
Yes.
Counsel Santa Maria.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Palatier.
Yes.
Counsel President Lupino.
Yes.
311-8, Ordinance Amending 10.32.350 of the Code of the City of Cranston, Title No Parking on Certain Streets Near School, Revises No Standing to Address Student Safety Concerns at Woodbridge School. Committee has met, recommends approval.
Is there a motion? Motion approved. There's a motion and a second. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
Yes.
Counsel Santa Maria.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Palatier.
Yes.
Counsel President Lupino.
Yes.
Ordinance 311-9, Ordinance 1032040 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled No Parking on Certain Streets. This repeals a no parking on the northerly side of Brook Street, sponsored by Counsel Vice President Palatier. Committee has met and recommends approval.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion approved and seconded. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
Yes.
Counsel Santa Maria.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Palatier.
Yes.
Counsel President Lupino.
Yes.
Lastly, Resolution of the City Council Opposing the Location of Many, Any Medical Marijuana Compassion Centers in the City of Cranston. This was debated in committee, and it was recommended for approval, but not unanimous. Committee recommends approval, therefore.
Okay, is there a motion? Motion by Counselman Favickio, or is there a second by Counsel Vice President Palatier? Is there any discussion? Counselman Stykos.
I'm going to be voting against this. I think that there are people who medically marijuana is beneficial to, and it's not just a, I think some people think it's a scam to smoke some pot, but that's not the case. And I think we also have to stop treating marijuana like it's some drug that is more dangerous than other drugs. We have places that give out OxyContin and other things that are abused on the street, and no one's proposing that we don't allow, that we prohibit those being sold. So there are, again, there are people who medically greatly benefit particularly in the control of pain by having medical marijuana, and I don't think this is a good move.
Thank you, Counselman. Counsel Vice President Palatier.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just want to rebut Counselman Stykos' remarks on looking at marijuana as an illegal drug. It's currently, it's still outlawed by the federal government regardless of what laws are passed by any state government. So with that being said, I don't oppose the use of medically required, the use of marijuana, but what this resolution does oppose the cultivation and the compassion centers located in Cranston.
Anyone else? Counselman Arquette, and then Counselman Donahue.
Thank you, Counsel President Lupino. I believe this resolution is premature. I just recently, State of Rhode Island has opened a door to allow compassion centers to begin treatment. I believe they allowed three throughout the state. I think Warwick has one. Cranston was not chosen as a community to have a compassion center. But this is on the cutting edge of what the future is going to bring, and why should we shut the door to, from Cranston's perspective? We're in many vacant buildings we have in our big city. This may bring state dollars. This may create jobs in our community. So I think this is really premature to prevent any compassion centers being allowed in the city of Cranston. I'll be opposing this resolution. Counselman Donahue.
Thank you, Counsel President Lupino. Through the chair, if we could, for the record, get the administration's opinion on the resolution.
Yes, if I might, thank you very much, Counsel President.
Well, as a request from the councilman, sure.
Thank you. The mayor has spoken up at the state aggressively against a compassion center in Cranston back when they were making considerations for this for a number of reasons. One of the key reasons was what Counselman Palatier brought up, which is that the federal law is not hand-in-hand with the cultivation of marijuana, and it hasn't really resolved that question. The state has not resolved that question. So first and foremost, that becomes problematic. And the other area of concern has been expressed by the police department. The police chief has done some research on communities where they are. He has some serious security concerns. You know, regardless of the question Counselman Stykos brought up about the need for marijuana medicinally, the concern is that everybody knows that someone coming out of there has marijuana, and the risk and the security for that particular person and the surrounding areas is of concern for our police department. So the mayor has spoken against it strongly. Again, it's not a position on whether or not marijuana is a legitimate medical outlet. It's whether or not a compassion center is something that in Cranston we would support.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Counsel President.
Okay, I'm going to agree with Counselman Stykos. Basically, the resolution is moot. The compassion centers have already been announced. There's not one in Cranston. The resolution really has no teeth because it's not resolving to anyone other than our own city leaders, and anything would have to have been done by ordinance anyway. So with that being said, will the clerk please take the roll?
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
No.
Counsel Arquette.
No.
Counsel Santa Maria.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Palatier.
Yes.
Counsel President Lupino.
Does that conclude Safety Services?
I believe so. I have nothing else on the docket, Counsel President.
Okay, thank you. And Public Works Committee, the Vice Chair, who's the Vice Chair of Public Works? Paul, Mr. Arquette, Counselman Arquette?
I'm Vice Chair of Public Works. I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you. Public Works Committee, Resolution Requesting the Administration Install Speed Bumps and Traffic Calming Measures on Princess Avenue in Front of Arlington Elementary School. Committee has met, recommends passage.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? There was some discussion in the committee level concerning the Safe Routes to School. Is there anyone ready to give us any, shed any light, further light to the rest of the council?
Mr. Cordy has some specifics on the Safe Route to Schools, but both of these areas that are mentioned in these two resolutions are targeted as Safe Roots to Schools programs. And I can tell you that we now have to respond to these resolutions urging the mayor to do something. Speed bumps will not be an option on regular city roads, so you will get a negative response from the mayor's office on the speed bumps, but the Safe Roots to Schools and the traffic calming measures are moving forward for both of those locations.
Counsel President, I'll withdraw my second. If it's going to be handled in safe routes, then I think this would be redundant.
Is there? Counsel Vice President has withdrawn his second. Someone else want to make a second?
Counsel Second.
Counselman Stykos, okay, under discussion. Any discussion? Thank you. I've been advocating for speed bumps since I've been on this council. I'm tired of being forced to vote no on three-way and four-way stop signs because someone in the neighborhood wants to slow the traffic down, and they think that's going to be accomplished by a stop sign. It hasn't worked. It becomes a nightmare enforcement issue. I look at neighboring cities and towns, Providence, Johnston, Warwick even has them now. There is no, I haven't had a definitive reason either from the traffic engineer, who actually, I believe, supports my notion, and I have never received a definitive answer from administration on why these cannot be installed. So I will support this resolution because I would like to hear from administration definitive reasons backed up by background in the area. There's speed bumps all around us, and there are other options. We've talked about speed bumps. We've talked about necks. We've talked about roundabouts. So there are other methods to slow down the traffic. So I would support this because I think it's a good, it was a good idea to begin with, but I also would be interested in seeing what the administration has to say about Counselman Arquette.
Thank you, President Lupino. This is my resolution. This was introduced on behalf of a number of constituents who live on Princess Avenue, Fountain Street. Traffic during the course of a school day from 8:00 to 2:30, people speeding in excess of 25 miles an hour up and down Princess Avenue. We have an elementary school there. We have, you know, four second graders come running out of school. I think it's important, it's imperative, that we put speed bumps in front of that school. I can attest to the fact that two years ago, Ward 3 was allocated $57,000 from this federal government for Safe Roots to School, and not a penny of that money's been spent in Ward 3 at this time. So let's get those speed bumps implemented on Princess Avenue, Crescent Avenue, and Harmon Avenue. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
Yes.
Counsel Santa Maria. Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel President Palatier.
Yes.
Resolution Requesting that the administration install speed bumps and traffic calming measures on Crescent Avenue and Harmon Avenue in front of Stadium Elementary School. Committee has met, recommends passage.
Motion to approve. Motion by Counselman Arquette, second by Counselman Stykos. Same resolution, different school. I assume the same comments. Counselman Arquette.
Thank you, President Lupino. Mostly the same comments. However, as we all are aware, Harmon Avenue is a cut through from Legion Way to Cranston Street, and just recently, we had the speed tracking device put there by the Cranston Police on Harmon Avenue, and a drunk driver rammed it and put it out of commission. So Harmon Avenue is a very well-traveled street near an elementary school. Drivers do drive it in excess of 25 miles an hour, minutes during the day, and it's also imperative for us to have speed bumps along Harmon and Crescent. Thank you for your indulgence, Counsel President.
Anyone further? Counselman Stykos?
I want to agree with Counselman Lupino's comments earlier that we need to look at all ways of slowing traffic. And I know that I attended a meeting where the mayor spoke against speed bumps, and he made some, frankly, some points that I'd never thought of, which were good points, but I think that he needs to get away from this blanket no-speed bump position into, you know, how do we slow traffic? And one of those solutions might be speed bumps. So I'll be supporting that, and I hope that the Director of Administration can relay to the mayor that maybe he needs to be a little more flexible on this issue.
Counsel Palatier.
Thank you, Counsel President. My only concern is in Ward 3, you were installing two sets of speed bumps if this resolution passes. My recollection, there's many areas in Ward 4 as well as many other wards that might have the same speeding problem. So what's going to happen now is you're going to get all the council members to submit resolutions to install speed bumps in their neighborhoods. It's my only concern. I mean, I'm not opposed to speed bumps, but, I mean, now you just secluded Ward 3 to have speed bumps, and nowhere else in the city has speed bumps.
Okay, Counselman Arquette.
A councilman does whatever it takes to get the job done. If it takes a resolution to get a speed bump, or as I suggest, Counselman Palatier, is submit a resolution, and I would support your resolution if you submit it, and I'm sure other councilmen will too.
Any further discussion? Just one comment is that the resolution does say "and" traffic calming measures, so it did leave that open. It's not just speed bumps. That was one mentioned, "and" traffic calming measures. With that, will the clerk please take the roll?
Counsel Donahue.
Yes.
Counsel Stykos.
Yes.
Counsel Arquette.
Yes.
Counsel Santa Maria.
Yes.
Counsel Favickio.
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Palatier.
No.
Counsel President Lupino.
Yes.
Resolution Urging the Mayor to Take All Necessary Steps to Enter Into and Execute a Construction and Maintenance Agreement with the State of Rhode Island in Furtherance of the Pecasset River Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Committee has met and recommends passage.
Motion approved. The motion is The motion is second. Any discussion? Just for a point of reference, this is the bridge at Reservoir in Picassett Avenue. Just so you know which one it is. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Pastor Donahue?
Yes.
Pastor Stikos?
Yes.
Pastor Arquette?
Yes.
Pastor Siriya?
Yes.
Pastor Favickia?
Yes.
Pastor Vice President Palte?
Yes.
Pastor President Pena?
Lastly, resolution requesting that the mayor and public works director address an allegedly dangerous and defective sidewalk located at 64 Pershing Street. Committee is met and recommends approval.
Second. The motion is second. Councilman Donahue for discussion?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the language, actually in the title. I don't disagree with the resolution. We'll be voting for it. I guess my issue is with the language underneath "resolution of the City Council" and "allegedly dangerous" and "defective sidewalk." I wonder if we could remove the language "allegedly dangerous" and leave it at "defective."
Okay, that was offered as a friendly amendment. Council, Councilman Favickia?
Thank you, President Lupino.
Second.
One other question, though. I would like to also ask that we remove the word "defective" as well. I would assume that the solicitor's office would prefer to move that word as well.
Okay, first of all, Councilman Donahue made a motion. Is there a second on Councilman Donahue's?
I'll second Councilman Donahue's.
All right, any discussion on his? Okay, now a second motion was offered, a second amendment. Okay, let's move on to, let's move on to First Amendment. Because there's no discussion. Clerk, take the role on the amendment, the friendly amendment.
Pastor Donahue?
Yes.
Pastor Stikos?
Yes.
Pastor Arquette?
Yes.
Pastor Siriya?
Yes.
Pastor Favickia?
No.
Pastor Vice President Palte?
Yes.
Pastor President Pena?
Yes. Okay, now we have a...hold on, we have a, no discussion because we have a, we have a motion. I'm looking for a second on Councilman Favickia's.
I'll second Councilman Favickia's.
Okay, now we have discussion on the Second Amendment, removing "defective." Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. I suggest we take a ride down to 64 Pershing Street because you can't walk on the sidewalk. There are two trees in front of the house, and the roots have uprooted the sidewalk at least about a foot above where the sidewalk should be, if not more. So it's a very allegedly dangerous and defective sidewalk. And if I had a picture of it, I'd show you. It's a very serious situation. That's why it should be this resolution.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, Councilman Favickia, what problem do you have with the word "defective"? Could you explain that to me?
Well, I think...
I can't hear you.
From a legal standpoint, I think that the solicitor's office might also have some objection to it. I just think that you're admitting that there's a defective condition. If someone were to fall between now and the time that it is repaired, you may have set us up for a claim.
So would you recommend another adjective we could use, or you just want to take it out?
I didn't really, I don't think we need the word "defective." Obviously, there's some kind of a problem there, that this tree growth or whatever. I just, that was my only concern. You know, I would defer to the solicitor's office, but I think that that's probably the conclusion that they make as well.
So, dangerous is gone, and you want to get rid of defective also?
That was my, that was my suggestion.
Okay, I think...
Just for clarification, just for clarification. The First Amendment, which was passed and agreed to, removed allegedly dangerous. So now we have, the public works director will address a defective sidewalk. We have a motion and a second asking to remove defective, and the public works director would address a sidewalk located at 64 Pershing. So if you vote for the amendment, you're voting to remove defective. Council, Council Vice President Palte?
Council President, can we just remove the word sidewalk? Do we want to do nothing?
Solicitor?
Get rid of the street, keep the sidewalk.
While he's gathering his thoughts, I want to make, mention that there were two other resolutions for two other sidewalks in this committee, but they were addressed by Administration or by the public works director. So they were, they were not voted on, they were removed. So they were taken care of. This was, this one was not. Solicitor?
Well, you know, I guess there are a lot of ways to do, to do things. I guess submitting a resolution would be one. I generally agree, agree with Councilman Favickia's statement that you generally wouldn't want to publicize conditions that you deem to be allegedly defective or hazardous to the general public because it certainly puts everyone on notice now that at this sidewalk, we are on notice of a condition. Some might say, and I'm not faulting anyone for putting this in, but some may say a call to public works might be a better way to handle something like this than to broadcast it on the internet and on the television of the exact sidewalk location of where, I mean, you could say, you could rephrase the ordinance to say, "A motion to get rid of the overly aggressive tree," and not the allegedly dangerous sidewalk, I guess. There are two ways to look at it. But I think I heard the Director of Administration say that the person who owns the sidewalk in front of the tree actually likes the tree. So I don't know where you go from there.
The concern on that sidewalk is the tree. The highway director did go out, yes, two trees, and did deem that this was not a trip hazard. The reason he fixed the other two was he agreed that there was a trip hazard. We have gone out, we have determined that this is not a trip hazard, and that the curve in the sidewalk is directly the result of trees, which the homeowner could choose to have removed. Right now, we would not be removing those trees. So that's, that is the status. We did look at it.
A question to the Administration on the trees. Are they, the trees on city property or are they on the homeowner's property?
I am not sure. I do not know if they're on the homeowner's. Obviously, we wouldn't remove them. And frankly, right now, trees on city property, we are not removing unless they pose an immediate public safety hazard for falling.
That being said, there's a, there's a, a motion and a second on an amendment to remove the word "defective." No other discussion. Clerk, take the role on the amendment.
Pastor Donahue?
Yes.
Pastor Stikos?
No.
Pastor Arquette?
No.
Pastor Siriya?
No.
Pastor Favickia?
Yes.
Pastor Vice President Palte?
Yes.
Pastor President Pena?
Uh, no. So the motion failed, so we're back on the main motion. Which will now read "Resolution requesting that the mayor and public works director address a defective sidewalk located at 64 Pershing Street." Councilman Stikos, last thing on this.
Yep, through the chair, if I could ask the sponsor, you know, you heard the Director of Administration say there's no problem at all. You're saying there's a huge problem? Maybe that, yeah.
Hold on, let's, let's have a withdrawal. Hold on, let's have a withdrawal of the second. Whoever made the second?
Well, no, no, I think we, we need the motion to be on the floor, and then we can make the secondary motion to table or postpone.
The motion, the motion on the floor right now is to pass the resolution. So I need, I need someone that made a motion, who made the second, to pass the original motion to...
Point of order, point of order, I don't believe that's correct parliamentary procedure if we could have a ruling on that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, to, to continue this to a definite time. Second. And that, the definite time would be the, would be the next public works.
Council President, Council President, you're going to recommit it back to committee?
We're going to go back to committee. The next public... Excuse me. Okay, so, well, we're voting to move it back to, back to committee. So, will the clerk please take the roll?
Pastor Donahue?
Yes.
Pastor Stikos?
Yes.
Pastor Arquette?
Yes.
Pastor Siriya?
Yes.
Pastor Favickia?
Yes.
Pastor Vice President Palte?
Yes.
Yes. Finance Committee?
Thank you. Good evening, Council President. Finance Committee met, and we discussed several things, first being the denial of tax interest waiver request from Sign Graphics as recommended by the City Treasurer. We denied the denial, and then we approved the denial, we approved the approval. So it's a little, it was a little confusing, but there was, we recommended approving the tax interest waiver. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So is there, is there a motion? Motion to approve. Prove the approval.
The, yes.
Right. There was a, we did the denial, we, we shut down the denial, then we did an approval, and we passed the approval in committee. Okay, the, the motion says denial of tax interest waiver. So it's the, it's the recommendation of the committee that you, you vote no on the denial. That's the recommendation from the committee. So a no vote would, in essence, approve the tax waiver.
Right.
So vote no. All right. So with that, I'll entertain a, there's a motion and a second?
Motion to no?
There's a, there's a motion and a second. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Yes.
Pastor Stikos?
No.
Sorry, I'm confused. We're voting...
This is how we win a committee, too. It's the same thing.
All right.
The motion is, is to, to do what?
The City Treasurer made a motion to deny this. There was, there was discussion. That what's before you now is, if you, if you vote yes, you uphold the City Treasurer's denial of the tax waiver. If you vote no, you are, in essence, approving the tax waiver. There will be a second vote to approve it.
Well, with...
You have to override his denial first if you want it to go forward.
Okay, well, I, I agree with the City Treasurer's denial, so I am voting yes.
Okay, so we have two yasses. Continue with the roll?
Pastor Stikos?
No.
Pastor Siriya?
No.
Pastor Favickia?
If you vote no, you're, you're overriding the denial.
No.
Pastor President Palte?
No.
Pastor President Pena?
No. Now, there will be a second motion because we need clarification, an approval of a tax interest waiver request from Sign Graphics. Motion approved. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second? Clerk, please take the roll.
Pastor Donahue?
No.
Pastor Stikos?
No.
Pastor Arquette?
Yes.
Pastor Siriya?
Yes.
Pastor Favickia?
Yes.
Pastor President Palte?
Yes. Yes. Okay, that passed.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Vice President?
Yep, thank you, Council President. Tax interest waiver is approved by the, recommended by the City Treasurer. We have a list that was in your packet. It was a voted, recommended approval. Entertain a motion?
There's a motion. Is there a second? Grab, second, Councilman Favickia, any discussion? Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. I just, I know the city has a policy to always deny businesses, and yet I see the YMCA asking for a waiver. What's the rationale when the Administration is quote-unquote, "They don't allow any tax breaks for private enterprises or corporations," or et cetera, et cetera?
The YMCA doesn't fall into the category of a business. It's a nonprofit. And that, that policy that the Treasurer has typically followed and has been followed for years is for for-profit businesses, but the YMCA is not for profit.
It's because it's a nonprofit? Well, it's the sweetheart deal that they got on the pastory building. I don't think we should give them a waiver.
Councilman Vice President, Council Vice President Palte, then Councilman Santa Maria?
Councilman Arquette through the chair. I agree with you wholeheartedly. I mean, that was, I voted against that YMCA. There's no reason why the YMCA should have been excluded from... We could probably do, take them separately.
Council President, can I just ask one quick question?
Then we're just going to have to do the same, same thing what we just did for the previous one.
Yes, Council, Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. What's the hardship? It says hardship.
That would have been in the committee.
They're asking for hardship. What's the hardship?
How about if we continue it?
Just, just for your, your, just for your information, the, the interest that they're trying to waive is $103.22. Councilman Santa Maria?
So what's the hardship? It doesn't matter if it's a penny. If you're, if you're applying for hardship, you have to have a hardship.
That was presented at finance, so I'm not... It was, it was. I believe they...go ahead, Bob.
Through the chair, we'll get that information to you if the committee wants to move on to the next site, and we can come back to that.
Okay, okay, we'll hold that for, for, for tax interest waiver denials.
All right, so now we're going to do the tax interest waiver denials of Marion Stella as recommended by the City Treasurer. I'll entertain a motion.
What, what was the, the vote in committee?
It was voted to approve the denial.
Sustain the denial, okay.
Yep.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Councilman Donahue, clerk, please take the roll?
Pastor Donahue?
Yes.
Pastor Stikos?
Yes.
Pastor Arquette?
Yes.
Pastor Siriya?
Yes.
Pastor Favickia?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Council President, if I could entertain doing 3-11-1, 2, 3, and 4 as a block because they're all relative to the same tax incentive commercial for five, 10, five-year and 10-year incentives? I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, there's a motion to take them as a block. Is there a second? Is there any dissension? There is none. Okay, so we can't take them as a block. So this would be for 3-11-1, -2, -3, and -4.
Correct.
And those were all recommended, positively. Any discussion? Councilman Stikos?
I'll be voting against these because I don't know if these tax incentives work or they don't work. And whoever put together the original ordinance, very carefully in Section J on lines 135 to 144, called for an annual report put together by the... Um, I'll be voting against these because I don't know if these tax incentives work or they don't work, and, uh, whoever put together the original ordinance very carefully in Section J on lines, uh, 135 to 144, uh, called for an annual report put together by the planner, the tax assessor, and the Director of Economic Development on these incentive programs. Uh, that hasn't been done, we learned in committee, and that's the report that we need in order to figure out if these things are working or not. I was forwarded some material by the tax assessor, but frankly, the print was so small and the, the file was so wide that I couldn't read it on my computer, right? I think other people probably had the same experience, so I think if we're going to give away tax money, which is what these do, we need to be sure that it's worth it, and we don't have any way to gauge that now because we have no report, so I'll be voting no.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President, I'll, I'll be supporting the four ordinances only because there's a sunset provision for May 1st, um, and we would jeopardize not having one at all. However, I would like to reserve the right to, I'd like to amend it at a future date because I would rather have, uh, more job creation than just three, so at a later date, I may be putting in an amendment, but not to jeopardize this, uh, because May 1st is right around the corner, I, I will be supporting, um, the four ordinances.
To the Chairman of Finance, it's my recollection at the, uh, committee level that we did add an amendment, these should be as amended.
They should be as amended, correct.
And, and there was a provision put in there for, I think I brought up the, uh, the fact that it would be reported to the, to the council on the, uh, yes, it, it was amended and it was to bring this forward at the, the third meeting of the Finance Committee and, and every calendar year, to re, to report to the committee with an audit, with audited figures, making sure that they comply to the provisions of the, the tax incentive. Councilman Stekos?
A question, I, I don't see a sunset provision in any of these, this new ordinance, am, am I, uh, missing it, or?
Through the chair. Council President, Vice Presidents.
Through the chair, Palatier. Um, Councilman Stekos, that, that's what the, the amended resolution removed that sunset provision. The old ordinance, um, had the sunset provision in it, we took that out.
Council President, if I might?
Yes, if you want to ask a question.
Sunset is removed, but that does not conclude you from at any point making motions to amend these ordinances like any other ordinance on the book.
Well, my follow-up question is, why was the sunset removed? Why didn't we just extend it five years or whatever, some, some number of years rather than remove the sunset provision?
I, I don't think that, I guess the feeling was that there was not really a plan to end tax incentives and that, as I said, like any other ordinances, the needs of the community change and the desires of the council change, you certainly can always amend those, and eventually you could vote to remove them if you didn't want them, but to sunset them puts the burden on, on, on a process like this where we're passing something that you may still want to amend, but we're under pressure to pass it because of a deadline, whereas, if you move them forward now without a sunset, at any point, you can amend in any way you want, or vote to pull them out of the code even.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please take the roll on the, uh, the four ordinances.
Wait, this is a, this is a vote to, to take them in a block, right?
Yes.
Vote to take them in a block and then the vote.
Vote on taking them as a block.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Seikos?
No.
Ms. Arquette?
No.
On the block. Entertain a motion, block. Motion to approve, second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Seikos?
Yes.
Ms. Arquette?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
Ms. Vidia?
Yes.
Ms. Falcini?
Yes.
Ms. Falcini?
Yes.
Ordinance three dash eleven dash seven, an amendment of the chapter 3.12 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Taxes Generally, Tax Bill Recycling Notice. I don't recall if this one was approved. It was amended. Through, through the chair, can we give, um, what the recommendation was? To the amendment?
To the clerk?
I'll have to retrieve those from my office, I don't have them here.
Okay. Um, this, how about a, I'll entertain a motion for a five-minute recess, Council President.
Well, let's, let's address the, um, let's address that other hanging, uh.
Yep, we can go back.
Hardship issue, the, uh.
Okay, the hardship, the YMCA?
Yeah, that was. Tax interest waiver approvals. Could you, could you press that or make sure that that's on? There's a button you have to press? No, that's the light, the other, the button on.
To address Councilman Santa Maria's, uh, question about the hardship relating to the YMCA, um, we, as you know, we own the building, and what happened was when the tax bill went out, believe it or not, it came to us, it never went to the YMCA, so therefore, they never received the bill, so they were, once they, we found the correction and we sent it to them, obviously, by the time they paid it, it was late, so it was our error, basically, because we owned the facility.
I don't know if I'd call that a hardship, I'd call that a boo-boo.
Well, it's a hardship to them and a boo-boo to us.
Alright, so we'll go back to, uh, the recommended approval of the tax interest. Yeah, there was a motion and a second, uh, under discussion, Councilman Donahue?
Uh, thank you, Council President Lupino, and it's directed, through the chair to Director Strong, related again to the YMCA. Are they a tax, a tax-exempt 501(c)(3) organization?
They're a nonprofit, so I believe they are.
So why are they paying taxes to begin with?
Um, let me see what the tax was for. This was, no, this is sewer charge. I believe that's part of the agreement, this was the sewer charge.
It's the sewer charge?
Yes.
Got it, great.
Okay, motion and a second, clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Seikos?
Yes.
Ms. Arquette?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
Ms. Vidia?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Uh, there was a request for a five-minute recess, so we'll, uh.
You can, you can move on, we can skip.
Well.
We're almost done.
Okay, proceed, our resolution?
Yep. Resolution requesting that the Governor and General Assembly restore the state's pilot funding to the City of Cranston and not proceed the proposed slashing of the $232,023 in Cranston's pilot funding allocation.
Motion to approve.
Committee met and recommended approval.
Sorry, motion to approve.
Second.
Wait, hold, hold, okay, I'll entertain a motion, Councilman Santa Maria made the motion, seconded by Councilman Arquette, any discussion? Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President, again, at the committee, I, I urge my colleagues to support me, um, along with the Mayor's Office, uh, I think this is an insult that we're not even getting level funded on pilot funds, as you all know, our police and fire go up there daily, uh, we can't tax th- these properties, and to, to lose another $232,000 of income, I think is, again, I'll say it, insulting, so I ask for, hit a home run on this one in unanimous support, thank you, Council President.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Seikos?
Yes.
Ms. Arquette?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
Ms. Vidia?
Yes.
Ms. Falcini?
Yes. Yes.
Resis- Resolution establishing a committee to implement consolidation of city and school personnel departments. Committee met and recommended, no, made no recommendation.
There is no recommendation, is this, um, if I remember correctly, this came under, uh, before us before and it, it got to a point where they went as far as they could with the, uh, Project Redirect, so, um, this resolution having no standing, I don't know what we would do with this at this point in time. Uh, Councilman, Council Vice President Palatier?
Thank you, Council President, um, I put this resolution in, uh, as well as, uh, School Committee Member Janice Ruggieri put in a sister resolution with the schools, um, where we're going to, since some of them, the measures failed in Project Redirect, where, um, and, and Project Redirect was, is taking the whole city as a whole and doing consolidation projects, we're, we're taking each individual departments, one by one, and trying to make some efforts, some valid efforts, in consolidating some duplicate city services, so I, I recommend, um, I encourage my fellow councilmen to support this, so perhaps we can, uh, formulate a committee to, to, uh, start consolidating.
There being no other discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Seikos?
No.
Ms. Arquette?
No.
Ms. Sari?
No.
Ms. Vidia?
Yes.
Ms. Falcini?
Yes.
Ms. Falcini?
No. Four, three?
It fails.
What was that, four, three?
It fails.
And that concludes Finance. Oh, we still have the other matter, we have a pending, uh.
Could, could.
Yes.
Perhaps, perhaps rather than do this, uh, on the fly, we could refer this back to committee and get the wording straight for, uh, on the recycling, uh, notice, get it, it all straight for the next meeting, since there's no rush, the tax bills don't go out.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to return this ordinance, uh, three dash eleven dash seven back to committee.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, there's a motion and a second, clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Arquette?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
Ms. Vidia?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Ordinance Committee, Paul Arquette, Chair.
Thank you, uh, President Lupino, Ordinance Committee, uh, met and, um, passed two resolutions, first resolution requesting that the Cranston School Committee carefully study and examine the long-term cost implications of the proposed privatization of the school, city schools' bus operation.
Entertain a motion to approve?
No, no, entertain a motion. Hold, hold on, hold on, wait, hold on. I didn't ask for a motion yet, council?
Thank you, President, uh, you know, I, I'm going to refuse myself.
Okay, okay. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, I'm sorry, Council Vice President? As a co-sponsor, yes. Okay, um, clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Seikos?
Yes.
Ms. Arquette?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Falcini?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
Next resolution, Council President, uh, resolution encouraging through an general assembly to lift existing moratorium on historic tax credits for projects with significant civic impact. Entertain a motion to approve?
Was that, how was that voted in, uh, committee? How was that voted in committee?
That was, uh, voted, uh, I think it was all in favor, I think it was unanimous.
Okay, motion?
Make a motion.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Stekos?
Yep, um, you have a, a question through the chair for, um, for the sponsor, I, I'm a little, um. I, I feel that what the, the historic tax credit provision in the, that the generals, that was state law, was excessive, that they gave away too much, cost too much money, now, is this, do you, is this focused in some way, or is it, is it just, let's have the old credit back?
Um, well, this was to, um, request them to, um, uh, stop the moratorium and limit the, uh, amount of projects to 1218, is a number being debated in, in the general assembly, and we don't know if that bill's going to pass in the general assembly, but, uh, the resolution that is being comprised at the State House will have a finite number, because prior to the moratorium, there was no finite number, and they just allowed project after project, but you're right, we ran out by a tax deficit.
Okay, is there, is there any way we could include that thought in the, within?
I'm sorry, could, could you speak up?
I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm wondering if we can include that thought in the resolution.
Well, well, in all respect, Councilman Stekos, if the general assembly's going to pass this, then probably not, but if they do repeal the moratorium, they're going to put limitations on it, so I really, I don't think we need to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Clerk, take the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Seikos?
Yes.
Ms. Arquette?
Yes.
Ms. Sari?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, uh, Claims Committee, Mr. Councilman Stekos?
Uh, these are the list of claims that have already been, uh, settled and accepted by both the Claims Committee and the person making the claim.
Okay, is there a, uh, motion?
Motion to rat rise block. I'll second that.
Motion and seconded, any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Seikos?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we are on to, uh, public hearings. This would be open to anyone who wishes to speak on any undocketed item.
Richard Tomlin's 400 Farmington Avenue. I was writing a column, somebody asked me, what's going on in the city of Cranston, and I said it might not, it might be something like a duck. It's going smoothly on the surface, but there's a lot of paddling going on underneath, this is where I think we are now, I've heard some votes here tonight that weren't, no discussion here because it was all done someplace else, the votes were elicited and the votes were given tonight, now, if that's what you're going to do for the amendment meetings, uh.
You're out of line, many of the votes that were taken this evening were passed on at the committee level, most of our discussions under this council, or anyone is eligible to attend the committee meetings, none of the votes this evening were, that were taken other than resolutions, anything that came out of the committee was voted on by the members at the committee meetings. So I'll take that.
The key word is most, that's what the public should understand, most, M-L-S-T, uh, we can, we can fool some of the people some of the time, but that's not a way to make an honest council, now, it, when you get into the, the amendment, which is going to be on May 3rd, uh, that'll be the true test, that'll, that'll tell the public exactly what. That'll, that'll tell the public exactly what is going on and what the decisions will be made that will not be discussed that openly in the public. I'll guarantee it, regardless of anybody's contradiction to the same. So, it's important that each of you understand that somehow, some way, don't forget, it's not just in the city now, it's nationally, it's statewide, we may be a little bit behind, but you read all sorts of kinds of columns, you even see in the state legislature, you see in the treasurer, talk about what has to be done. Now, I think I heard the word tonight, that somebody used the word, well, we can't do it. Yes, you can do it. You can't do it if you don't try, that's for sure. Right now, there should be discussions with every single union to see if they want to make, particularly on healthcare, if you've got fifteen percent, seventeen and a half percent, twenty percent across the board, you would solve, at least currently, the budget for this city. But you, you know, then they say, well, the contract doesn't allow us to do this, it doesn't allow us to do that. You're right, it doesn't, and it never will, until you start planning right now. There's things besides healthcare and other financial considerations, which all comes back to financial considerations, of course, consolidation of schools, consolidation of services, we've heard about these things for years now. The reason they don't get any further than conversation is because you don't make any future plans. You have to put it out there, at least as an idea, at least as a proposal, at least as something that has an end result. Because by the time you get two, three years down the road, there may be other council members, and maybe other administrations, but they can start all over again, we're in the same position again. But if you have proposals that are public, well thought out, documented, that shows that we can be on a path to make sense, not only in the monies, the monies is only part of it. Because there's nothing that you can do money-wise if you're gonna take away some of the services in this city. And that's where we're gonna end up. We're not gonna end up with enough money for senior services, libraries, road fix, trees cut, or anything else. In fact, the thing that perhaps disturbed me the most, in Sunday's paper, you read the two articles on Cranston. Probably no, no help from me, but I've been after those two papers for, for a long, long time. Let's start getting into the facts, present the public with what our interest should be. If they don't do it, I don't know who's gonna do it. Well, they did do it. And what was the mayor's comment that was italicized? Well, probably, are you kidding me? Probably? And we've been talking about this for years, and he's just waking up to it? So, let's hope that that is not gonna be what the council does, and that when you get into this amendment, that you do it right, and you express yourselves publicly. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak on a undocketed item? There being none, we'll call that section closed. Elections to the officials. First up, we have the Juvenile Hearing Board. We have a, an appointment recommended by Councilman Stichos, Mary Jo Hines. There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Darniuk?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes. Is Mary Jo Hines in the audience? Could you please stand and be recognized? Congratulations. You're entitled to say a few words if you would like.
I'm sorry?
You're entitled to say a few words if you'd like.
Oh. Well, I'd like to address the council, and thank you very much for approving my appointment to the juvenile hearing board, and I hope that I will do my best to represent our city and to help the youth of our city. I have a passion for teens and for college-age students, and I'm hoping that I can make a difference in the lives of struggling teens and, and young adults. Thank you.
Good luck on behalf of the entire council. Thank you. Next is Iris Mello, a member of the juvenile hearing board, sponsored by Councilman Santa Maria. Motion to approve? Motion seconded, seconded by Councilman Favickia. Any discussion? Councilman Favickia?
Thank you, President Lupino. Just wanted to make a quick comment. Both of these candidates have...
Excuse me, make sure your, your mic is on, because he's...
I just wanted to say that both of these candidates have exemplary resumes, eminently qualified, and really happy to see such qualified people being brought forward and willing to serve for nothing, not being paid. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Councilman Santa Maria?
I'd like to thank Councilman Favickia for making that motion at the last meeting to open up those two positions, so that we could put two women in there. So, kudos to you for doing that. I think you did the right thing, and I think we did the right thing. So, thank you.
Okay, that being said, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Darniuk?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes. Iris Mello? Is she here? She is not, but good luck to Iris. Board of Canvases, the first is, these would be recommend, these are per our charter and, and state law regarding Board of Canvases, recommendations from the respective party chairman. The first is Robert Muxian, Republican, member appointment. By the way, these are for six-year terms. Is there a motion on Robert Muxian? A motion to approve?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Darniuk?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes. And then also was recommended by the Republican City Chair, Donald Roach, for the alternate appointment. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion and seconded. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Darniuk?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Serry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes. The next is the Democratic member appointment. This is a six-year appointment for Joseph Di Lorenzo.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Darniuk?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
No.
Councilwoman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Serry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Favickia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Yes. And the last on that is the Democratic alternate appointment for John Di Genova. There's a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Darniuk?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Arquette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Serry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Favickia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have report of city officers. Are there any reports of city officers? There being none, we're onto Executive Communications.
Thank you, nothing to report, except for the monthly update to the clerk of the Police Department. There are kind of fire numbers, I will get them to you. And if I could just also take a moment on two incidents that did happen this month with police and fire. First, you, as you all know, the horrific fire over on Aqueduct Road. Both our police and firefighters were on the scene responding, and we commend them for the, for the work well done, a very difficult situation for all on scene, with the trauma of a severely injured child. So, we thank them for their work. And as far as Police Department, we had a shooting incident on Bayview Avenue, and we, the first perpetrator was apprehended within, I believe, eight minutes, and the second perpetrator was apprehended within a few hours. So, I'd like to thank both departments for their continued excellent service to the public. Thank you.
Council President, Communications, I have done this evening. Councilmember Communications? Councilman Stichos?
As a new member, I have a question on these, on the amendment night, and I have some amendments that I would like to offer that night, but I, ahead of time, I would like to resolve their legality. And what I want to avoid is a situation where perhaps one lawyer says it's legal, and the other lawyer says it isn't legal, and there we are at the eleventh hour, trying to figure that out. Just to give you a, an example of what I'm talking about, I would like to do something to consolidate the Personnel Department, as Rob Palatier's resolution called for, of the city and the School Department. But I want to make sure that that's done in a way that is, is in keeping with the charter, which does have a provision for a Director of Personnel in the city. And I, I'm looking for some guidance on how we can all feel comfortable that something is legal or not.
Well, you, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give my example of that. However, you do have the, the council solicitor to, to run things by. He's, he was out last week, he had obviously shoulder surgery, so he's back in commission now, and he could certainly give you an opinion, whether it be on the phone, or if you want to have an email communication with him. As far as the actual, the actual numbers, you do have our council ordered him into Warner, who, who was your resource throughout this process.
Well, I guess my, my concern is, having dealt with lawyers, they have a lot of different opinions. And I'm concerned that, just to give one possibility, that, say, Mr. Quinlan would say, oh, that, you know, that's, I've reviewed the law, and what you're proposing is, is legal. And then we come to amendment night, and Mr. Kirshenbaum stands up and says, that's illegal.
Then it goes to the jury, which is the council members, who would vote and determine who made the more convincing argument. You have another, you have another factor in that move that you have to get beyond, is that this council does not have any line item control over the School Department. That falls in state education law. So, you have to get around that situation first.
I think there are a lot of issues that, that, about that issue, and I'm wondering how we have a, other than an eleventh-hour discussion, where we're all thinking, you know, everybody else is gonna have an amendment that they want to propose, and they want to get to that, and these, and we want to do it, assuming that everybody wanted to do that, we'd want to do it in the most effective way possible.
Yeah. No, I think it's a good point. I think if you email, certainly feel free to email me, but if you want to go through Pat, you know, feel free to do that, and he can share with me what you let him do, share with me. And I don't, I don't really think, I just asked Pat, I mean, I don't, I don't really think, in the nine years we've worked together, that we really haven't been able to work things out. So, I don't think there's ever been a, we've ever had a major disagreement about the law.
Okay, well, I, oh.
I would suggest, Councilman, respectfully, that as soon as you can get it to me by email or by phone, I can review it, and I will check with the solicitor, that's how we've done it in the past, to make sure we don't have an amendment night legal debate, and try to resolve that, at least have our positions together. Because, I mean, that one's a pretty tricky one, because there are charter provisions and state laws, so if, as soon as you can get them to me, I'll get back to you, as soon as I can research them and talk to Mr. Kirshenbaum.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
Are you through, Mr. Stichos? Do you have something else? Any, anyone else from the council? Okay, there is no old business, I understand. Introduction of new business. The city clerk, would you please read the new business into the record?
We have, we have the following new ordinances...
Could you, could you please use the microphone?
Testing, one, two, three. Proposed ordinance four dash eleven dash one, amending Chapter 10.12, Code of the City of Cranston, Motor Vehicles and Traffic. This is deleting a one-way on Honey Suckle Drive from Blueberry to Phoenix Lane, to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on May 2nd. Proposed ordinance four dash eleven dash two, again, an amendment of Title 10.32, Code of the City of Cranston, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Garden Hills Parkway and Garden Hills Drive. This is to, this is a housekeeping, it's cleaning up, a section that was to, needs to be deleted as a result of the amendment from last month. That's to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on May 12th. Proposed ordinance four dash eleven dash three, authorizing the purchasing agent to convey an easement to Notorianni Wilty, Inc., for use of city property on a portion of Ware Avenue. This is to be referred to Finance Committee for hearing on May 12th. Proposed ordinance four dash eleven dash four, this ordinance is ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining agreement and acceptance of the arbitration award with the teacher's aide, a teacher's assistant in bus saves, and the technical assistance unit for the school years 2011 through 2013. This is to be referred for, to Finance for hearing on May 12th. Proposed ordinance four dash eleven dash five, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, this is a zone change for 800 Oakland Avenue and 828 through 836 Oakland Avenue. This was filed by, the petition was filed by AGL Corporation and Montes, Montecatini Properties. This is to be referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on June 16th. We have a resolution urging congressional approval of continuation of funding of community service block grants to be referred to Finance for hearing on May 12th. We have the following proposed new claims. These are to be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on May 12th. Property damage, I'm sorry, May 2nd. Property damage claim, this is sidewalk damage caused from a tree from John Spremuli, allegedly on Legion Way, which occurred on April 13, 2011. Motor vehicle property damage claim from Scott Shear is a result of supposedly a drain in the street, and from an incident that happened on February 25th, 2011. Personal injury claim for slip and fall of Sandra Furlow, for an incident that occurred on April 9th, 2011. Property damage claim of Thomas Costello for incidents on various dates in March 2010 as a result of civil backup. Property damage claim of Hawaiian Ortega, smooth vehicle damage from an incident that occurred on February 3rd, 2011. Motor vehicle property damage claim due to pothole from Nancy De Shays, from an incident allegedly occurring on April 9th, 2011. Property damage claim, again, allegedly as a result of a pothole from Robert Quinn, from an incident allegedly occurring on March 31st, 2011. A property damage claim caused, allegedly caused by a tree from Jeremy and Revi Grimes, from an incident on February 3rd, 2011. Personal injury claim of Fanny Willis, allegedly from an incident on March 5th, 2011. And that is all I have.
Is there a motion to refer the new business to the committees as stated by Mrs. Wall?
Motion to refer. Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Darniuk?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pauline?
Yes. Miss Lanning's business on the clerk's desk. Do you have a conservation easement?
We still have not received the executed copy on that. I would, I don't know if administration has anything to report on that.
Mr. Cordy?
Through the chair, the attorney is...
Through the chair, the attorneys did meet again last week, there is progress.
Speak into the microphone.
Is it not? The attorneys did meet again last week, there is progress, but we have not yet made the transitions.
And what's this resolution approving the transfer of land?
That, that was through.
Oh, that was the seventeen seventy-one Pontiac Avenue.
Yes, that deed has been executed and was recorded on, I believe it was April fourth.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the council? If there is none, all in a motion? Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you.